Dear everyone, this is the Township of Franklin Township meeting of June 20th. Everyone please rise for a flag, so that...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in its name, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to adjourn for the open public meeting statement, please.
Notice of this meeting has been given as required by the Open Public Meeting Act and the annual notice of meetings. A copy was posted on the township website and notice of this meeting was sent to the Sentinel and a copy was posted at the Franklin Township Municipal Building.
Okay, um, hold call, please.
Kyle Clark?
Here.
Steve Ransohn?
Here.
Jim Kelly?
Here.
Kevin Constantine?
Here.
John Mulady?
Here.
Ralph Charlelton?
Here.
And Jeremy Cash?
Here.
And we're seating both Alden and Steve and Kyle this evening for Jake and Committee Man Doyle. Okay, uh, one bit of housekeeping here. I was, this afternoon I was informed that the public hearing on the affordable housing plan has been postponed to the following, until the August meeting. These conflicts solicitor has been provided by the township and the way I understand it is the township normally notifies adjoining municipalities by electronically email, which is totally legitimate and is done all the time. That's what we did in this particular case, but it was determined that in the affordable housing, there's a piece in the affordable housing program that requires it to be done by certified mail, which we did not do. So in abundance of caution and not to cause any problems, that particular, the affordable housing plan will be in the August meeting instead of this evening. I wanted to put that out there in case anybody was here just for that.
You're in July?
July, I'm sorry, you are correct, July. Uh, the certified notifications to municipalities will be going out, actually I think they went out today, and it'll be held at the July meeting in case someone's here this evening for that. And the same thing with the Dorney application, that has been pulled and pushed to the...
August.
August meeting, that's where I was giving them, mixed up that. Okay, July. This time I'll entertain a motion for PB 22-12, the buyer's industrial services resolution.
Motion for buyer's resolution.
Move second all in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, hold call, please.
Kyle Clark?
Yes.
Steve Ransohn?
Yes.
Jim Kelly?
Yes.
Kevin Constantine?
Yes.
John Mulady?
Yes.
Ralph Charlelton?
Yes.
Jeremy Cash?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. And our first application this evening is PB 2305, Thomas Rosa.
Yes.
Good evening, Terrence J. Bennett appearing for Mr. Rosa who I have your...
I'm having a hard time speaking, please.
Yes, my name's Terrence J. Bennett, I'm the attorney for Mr. Rosa who's here as well. Would you like to swear him in?
Michael, please.
Stand here, I didn't even go back.
Really?
Testy want to? Sit down.
Hey Tom, you know I'm a real guy?
Yeah, maybe, I do, really. It's not me, though. Is this a PZM here? Here's a PZM. Can you hear this one? Okay?
You can hear your finger on the Nazi voices. All right, let's try speaking into it and we'll see how we act.
There's no volume adjustment, huh, here?
Yeah, it should be all...
We'll speak loud.
Raise your right hand.
Okay.
Where does this mean about the good be truth, nothing but your true self, we got?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, oh, I forgot about the... Uh, yeah, Mr. Rosa lives over on Little Mill Road between Route 55 and Delsey Drive. He has his parents' house to the west of him and he'd like to move the line over to even things out because his lot where his house is, is a little bit too narrow. It's actually non-conforming. Currently, I believe your frontage is one, about 125 and, uh, there's a little bit of a discrepancy on the plan that we submitted. I think the intention was to make Tom's lot, which is 1.01, conforming as to frontage. For some reason, uh, the drawing has, has it extended to 145 feet, but in the grid of required minimums, it's listed at 155 feet. So that's a little bit of a mess there, but I believe the intention would be, and what Tom would like to do, is to even that out so both lots have the required 150 feet of frontage. And that would come at the expense of Lot 2 shrinking a little bit, uh, which the bulk requirement in that area is one and a half acres. Tom's house meets that, the parents' house doesn't, but it's, it's over an acre and I would note that Lot 3, the next house to the west, doesn't come close to meeting that. So I don't think we're negatively impacting anything as far as the zoning plan or the character of the neighborhood to make this lot line adjustment and just kick the line over. So even though the drawing says 145, we'd like to ask for 150 if that's okay. I know your engineer reviewed this and that was actually where it was brought to my attention when I read the report. Although I did advertise asking for any and all variances that we may need, so we're okay on that front. So it may be preferable to just have us as a condition of approval fix the lot line at 150 feet of frontage instead of 145. That would still leave 160 feet of frontage for the Lot 2 to the west. So it would improve the zoning actually because we would now have two lots that both have the frontage that we need. The only downside is, is the bulk in Lot 2 to the west that it doesn't make the one and a half acres that's on the books as what's required. But it's not a tiny lot, it's still over an acre. So, uh, does anyone have any question, have I confused the issue?
Michael, is it a small enough change by adjusting that five foot more or in fact is, can we conditionally do that? Is it a small enough change to add five foot to Tom's lot?
I think, you asked if the notice is okay, I think the notice is okay, we just have to clarify. You know, is the line just going to still be straight, will it be moved 10 feet?
Yeah.
Basically, is that moving 10 feet?
Five would give us conformance.
Yeah, I don't think it's a notice issue, Joe. Just, I guess we were wondering what the reason was for the, for the lot line adjustment.
Oh, what the reason was? You want me to tell you?
Yes.
Okay. I've lived next to my parents, took care of them, they raised me, built next to them and when we came out the back of my house on the deck, stepped down, you know, five feet, give or take, is my parents' land. Now that I've taken care of my parents and if they're both deceased, they want, I would like to sell their house, but it decays, the problem would be is, I would have no land just coming out of my house. So I had originally asked to move the line 20 feet. So, you know, we have some privacy, we have a four-wheeler riding out on the land, I wouldn't be able to ride alongside of the house anymore and that would give me what I need, not just for the four-wheeler, just for privacy. Also, I had a sloppy neighbor next to me, I would be able to put up trees, you know, and stuff like that, so. But I need this in order to sell the house. We did have the house under contract twice, but because we were waiting and hoping for this delay, actually lost those two sales. So now, once you, God willing, you approve this, I'll be able to list the house for sale. Be them. I would also list as a compelling reason that it would bring both lots into conformance as to frontage.
Well, first of all, I didn't exactly mean my parents' house, that you're doing right here a year ago, so I understand where you're coming from. The grant itself to, as you immediately put up 155, so we're going to try that?
We could, we could do that, uh, but all we need is 150. I'm looking at the 20-foot setback on Lot 2. If we kick it another 10 feet, we're getting pretty close, we'll, we'll have just about 20 feet to the structure, I think. So five feet might be a little better as far as where the two houses are on the two lots. It would get us to the conformance, but if, yeah, we have to correct the plan either way, obviously.
Just to clarify, Tom's house is a two-story frame dwelling. His house and his parents' house, lot?
Yeah.
Does that shrink down to 40 feet?
No, it would be going the other way. We would be increasing the frontage.
You're increasing it from 25 to 50?
Yeah.
Therefore, the 36...
31, yeah. That's why I was thinking only five feet might be better, we don't move.
That's awesome. That's a great catch, I guess, you guys. So was it a miscalculation, a part of the survey, or did he... Ask number song by 10?
Yeah, the plan's in conflict with itself.
Right.
But I, I had originally looked at this and I thought, oh, we only need the one variance, but your engineer caught the other one.
Terrence, very honest, would you need one of these, if I were the engineer, please?
Not unless anybody has any questions.
Okay, none, then if you don't, let's go to the planning engineer for comment for September 1st.
I'll go first. So, pretty simple application, they've explained this is a lot line adjustment between two properties that as I understand are in under common ownership or at least under common family ownership. There is at least one variance that's necessary here. Our report noted the two, they've testified that they want to shift the lot line over at least five feet, which would remove one of the variances, so they need 150 feet of frontage. Even though the table on the survey lists 155 for both, the actual drawing dimensions show 145, 165, so if they move one over by five feet, that deletes one of the variances and it's just a variance for minimum lot area for Lot 2 now. Now, how far over they want to move that line, whether it's five feet, 10 feet?
It was different than five. Yeah, because we already added 20, right?
Sorry, does it not make a huge difference in terms of, once you hit 150, then it's only one variance needed, but the further over they move that line, the smaller the lot, two guts and the more non-conforming that lot will be. We'll note, a variance is needed for not having a lot size for Lot 2, that's an existing condition, the lot already is a little undersized, I think it's 1.2 acres now and by moving the lot line over even further, it's going to be about, maybe a little over one acre. I can't quite do the trigonometry in my head of figuring out if you add five feet, where does this then come down?
Well, that line says...
Approximately an acre.
That says 538, so that's like 2,600 square feet difference, which is a seventeenth of an acre.
Whatever that exact math works out to can be figured out. But that's the issue there, is the further that lot line moves over, the more non-conforming the parents' lot becomes. And for any bulk variance, they have the burden proof to show that they meet the positive and the negative criteria. The positive is that there's either practical hardship or what they're proposing is a preferable alternative rather than strict conformance with the code. And also the negative criteria, that there's not going to be substantial detriment to the public good and that it's not going to substantially impair the intended purpose of the zoning plan. And in this instance, we're not adding any new dwellings, there's no new density here, this is a shifting of an existing lot lines, the overall net density and net impact on anything is, is, is nothing. Nothing's really changing other than the invisible line between the properties, although perhaps in the future there might be some trees up if you don't like your new neighbors or the other way, they can put trees up if they don't like you.
Yeah, it's all right, been there, done that.
There's definitely hardship in terms of the lot area because these are both existing lots that are undersized, or, I'm sorry, Lot 2 is already undersized and it would be, it would require a pretty crazy configuration of taking the backup Lot 1.01 and making a very odd shaped lot to try and make Lot 2 actually get to 1.5 acres and both of them at 150 feet of frontage. That's my opinion at least. It's minor comments, subdivision notes, you're intending to file by deed, so if so, please submit to our office, add the tracks as noted in outside agencies. I know one thing that Chris actually had noted in his section, there's no proposed improvements on either lot, they're proposed as part of this change.
Just moving the line.
I have no further comments.
Any questions from board members? So I understand this correctly, the, the grant itself showing the, the lot frontage is showing 155 on both and that's incorrect, so Lot, I don't know, 1.01 will be a full 130-foot frontage and Lot number 2 will be a full 160-foot frontage and plan to be corrected to reflect that as numbers, correct? Somebody else? Mike, you go ahead.
I'm assuming there'll be revised plans on...
Your side yard setbacks.
Part of the motion that the revised plans would reflect those numbers.
Yeah, their side yard setbacks would also be adjusted and then also potentially, I guess, the rear yard, possibly.
Was there notice given on this? Yes.
Yes.
I'll find them, they're, they're lawyer. Okay. Open the public, they have a motion to open the public. Second, is there a second?
Yes.
Move second all in favor, aye.
Aye.
This time we're open to the public for comment on PB... Yeah, on this application. Hearing none seen, and this time I'll entertain a motion to close the public. Move second all in favor?
Aye.
All right, gentlemen, input or comments or motion, please.
Motion to approve PB 2305, providing that a new survey is provided as well as...
It's not a new, it's a new drawing. He's not going after me, sorry.
A new drawing. A new drawing.
Have a motion? A motion, second, hold vote, please.
Kyle Clark?
Yes.
Steve Ransohn?
Yes.
Jim Kelly?
Yes.
Kevin Constantine?
Yes.
John Mulady?
Yes.
Ralph Charlelton?
Yes.
Jeremy Cash?
Yes.
Okay, uh, PB 23-12, please, please.
Thank you.
Come see your neighbor.
Jim, I had to move a bunch of yuckus, knowing that I, I did, I gotta come and see your yuckus. Thank you, man, and ladies, and lady. Thanks, appreciate it.
Okay, moving on, the, we have two sets of minutes for the March meeting and the April meeting. We'll do one set at a time. The minutes for March 21st, is our motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, we have original and amended, so I think we have to have a discussion of what we're, what we're approving.
Yeah, true. That's true, I'm trying to get to it, Michael.
Okay.
Okay, here it is, here.
Do we only need to approve the amended or...
Yeah, we do.
Well, perhaps, few things to say about what's going on.
All right, go ahead, go ahead.
We've had, each time we have our minutes come up, we've had an objection to them and a desire to have them amended. When I spoke to Desiree, who's not here tonight, our planning board secretary, one day she indicated to me that she had spent the entire day looking at tapes, listening to tapes because she was trying to get the minutes away, Mr. Kelly had directed her to have it. That's not appropriate, no board member should be talking to the planning board secretary and directing her to listen to the tapes to get their verbatim statements in there, which was what was occurring. Wants to have his verbatim statements in, I think we've heard that each time he's objected, is that I didn't say this, I said that. The minutes are not a verbatim statement of what is said, they are a summary. If somebody wants a verbatim statement, then they word a transcript and have it verbatim. You can't have, you can't have a hybrid because if Mr. Kelly wants his statements to be stated verbatim, then I want mine to be in, I want yours to be. So then we're back to having a transcript and not the minutes. So Desiree was unaware that she shouldn't be directed by one board member as to what should be in the minutes. She's aware of that now. It got to the point where Mr. Kelly had told her to specifically say these words instead of that words. I saw the email, she finally said, no, enough's enough, and she refused to do that. So the minutes that should be approved are the minutes not amended because they are, were done properly. They were done the way they should be done. If there's any question, because there seem to be some questions on a lot of these items, just wanted to make sure the board is aware of what the law is regarding minutes. There is a, there is a, an appellate division case, first of all, the video is not the official minutes. I know, I assume you're aware of this, Jen, what I'm talking about?
Yes.
It's correct, I know Desiree's not here, but I mean, yeah, okay. The video is not the official record of the minutes, but there is a, an appellate division case. There was an appeal of a trial court judge who, his interpretation was that a governing body had to have a verbatim transcript of some decision it had made and the appellate division overturned the trial court and said, we disagree with this reasoning, first because it assumes that recording the governing body reasons in its minutes requires the inclusion in the minutes of everything said at the meeting on the subject. Minutes have never been viewed this way, they need, contain only a recitation of the matters discussed, the identities of the speakers, the summary of the discussion, and a statement of the decision made. Not a verbatim transcript, that's a separate thing. So we seem to be on a path of every, every month there's an objection and a desire to have an exact statement made, that's not what minutes are. So the appropriate thing for the board is to not have verbatim statements in the minutes, unless it's going to be everybody.
I'm sorry, I have that, I need to say this, say this, fine.
You want to go first or...
Well, yeah, I'll go first. The objection wasn't necessarily for the minutes, the objection was for the motion and the motion wasn't carrying through, so the minutes from that weren't approved. Do I have that right? The, the motion was made for you to write the letter.
And you...
And how that letter was to be written and it was unanimously, the letter never was written the way that the motion, the carried motion was set forth. So that's where the discussion with the minutes came in.
Yeah, I mean, Mike, this, the reason why I...
Jim, before you, oh, I'm sorry, let me cut you off for one second, I'll give you all the time you need. Jim, as far as you know, and I'm looking at them now, besides the request of the letter, that motion and that piece of it, the amended minutes and the original minutes are identical in both, and I'll tell you what, we'll let Jim go on, I want to, what I'm trying to determine is that what is the difference between the original minutes and the amended minutes other than the discussion about sending a letter to the township committee? Are both identical beside that one issue that's hanging out here? And do you want to wait, wait, you know, we'll, we'll wait, Timmy, we'll wait, I want to, I want to make sure that, what are we talking about, difference between the two?
Yeah, it's just the...
I don't see no, I see it being copy and paste and the body is about, okay, all right. So we had an understanding that, what are we talking about, an amended versus, the original versus the amended, it's only discussion about the letter? Okay, got it.
Let me just, let's have a little bit of some of this. The, what I raised in March was, I asked you back, like, before the motion was raised, I said, is it, is it possible for you to write a letter to the township committee covering two points?
I'm gonna rehash the letter, I'm not gonna rehash the letter, the letter's finished.
Well, then you defy the disorder system.
Absolutely did not.
You have, the board asked unanimously for you to write a letter that contained two pieces. You got one of the pieces correct, perfect, the other piece will completely bore month after month after month. And now you're saying that you're, that this is a waste of time? Desiree asked me exactly what, what those minutes should say, she needed some help and some guidance. I can't imagine that, that my one paragraph took our entire day to prove. No, it's important to say... She's not here because that's exactly what she said, she was concerned about what was said and the exact words where I spent an entire day going back and looking at the tape. And I have the, I have, this is how specifically wrote, she got done doing it and your email says, in the third line, replace these words, what was the source of the properties with these words, what was the source person or persons? I mean, you're giving her specific instructions, she looked back to you and basically said, no, I listened to the video numerous times and what was the source for your exact words. So she's going back and forth and once she got it exactly right, you told her to change it, something that wasn't in the tape. Something that wasn't in the tape. I'm gonna go back to March, you understood my, my motion perfect because you, when I asked you if this was something you could do, you said yes, but I can't do it in the direction of one board member, I need to have it to work for others. So you understood what was being asked?
I certainly did, I'm glad.
And then you decided not to do it? You know what you don't understand, Jim? You don't understand the role of a board member individually.
Can you talk into the microphone, please?
Mike, hey, Mr. Kelly, you think that you are somehow superior in authority? No, I don't, no, I don't. You think you can direct me as to what I will put in the letter? Well, you are a solicitor and if the board has to do something, then you should do it. Yes, and you wanted the letter to be, a draft to be sent. Draft was sent, there's 11 board members, you think you're the only one that matters, but... We had an unanimous approval, what was to be included in that letter? And you wanted a draft and I circulated it. Three people had suggestions, eight did not, that's a majority. Why do you, I don't know where you're coming up with this majority, that was not discussed at all. No, no. Did you think you were the one who's gonna direct me the letter? Did you think you were the one? What was decided, no, what was decided was that, you know, you didn't want to have the letter responses and we said, okay, we're gonna put a timeframe on when board members can respond. And initially Joe threw out 44 hours and he felt that that was a little tight, I asked for 48, everyone agreed that that was okay, and if he didn't respond in 48 hours, then he didn't have an opportunity to respond. Had nothing to do with the majority vote, nothing. That was not discussed at all. That's, that's not even reasonable, that's not even a reasonable answer.
I meant, I meant an I agree, but what?
What do you want? Is that me, I disagree? I didn't buy the word of the fact that I said I disagree, but then... I agree, but what? But he missed the second one.
I missed that you do.
Okay, no, again, you missed, we're looking for just some sort of response. There's no... They're not gonna respond to... Then that's, then that's the answer.
It's a small town.
Like that, you don't got a ranch there. Steve, you got a parade of residents coming up to the microphone wanting an answer. You got people on this board that want to answer. The planning board is not a pool.
You can walk four slats down and ask them, mate. It's a small town.
And that's the answer.
Jesus Christ, I mean, when you make the big guy, you can walk four seats down and ask them.
Because it's the right thing to do, that's why.
It's the right thing to do.
The process is that way.
So you can, you can say to him, are you confused? And just respect him, you think that's right? You think that's the core? That is bullshit.
And that's it. That's the beginning, I believe there's emails... There's emails, Mr. Kelly's sarcastic, and I didn't respond to them, but he doesn't have the ability to disagree with me without being, trying to be condescending. I'm not even going to read those statements. It's unnecessary to see what... So, Mr. Chairman, the point is that, as you can see, Mr. Kelly's interpretation was that if the other board members, whatever they said, didn't matter. Ultimately, he was going to tell me to put in the letter. I was supposed to go back and forth with him in wording, and that's not how it works. And that people didn't have a change, Mr. Ranson just said. If I didn't respond, means I was okay with it. Should he expect it to be changed by Mr. Kelly? And I'd say, "Wait a minute, why would it change?" Yes, majority does rule.
I want to go back to March, when there was a unanimous approval of what we asked you to do, and you didn't do it. Let's talk about that.
Yeah, let's talk about it. It ended up, the next meeting, the next process took place, I wrote the letter, a draft was circulated, and it was satisfied.
And it was incorrect, but...
To you, not to Mr. Ranson, not that there's three people responding.
There were two parts that needed to be included in that letter, you left one of them out. How much more clear can you be? There's nothing to misinterpret there. You left out one of the pieces that was supposed to be in the letter.
The letter was written, and the board approved. By not responding, he didn't.
Oh, jeez.
And you think you're the one who's putting it on?
No, I'm going to go back to, again, I'm going to go back to the March vote.
Why?
Because that's what was approved and never got done.
That was the body of the motion, what was being asked of you to write the letter. It's in the minutes, it's not, I'm sorry, it's not in the minutes, it's on the tape.
Why are we beating up the letter? We followed that up with two other meetings. So why are we still beating up the letter? Is the purpose to use the planning board as a tool to affect the township?
No, absolutely not.
We were used as a tool for the public. The public came to us and said, "Why?", and our questions were, "Why were these properties..." We were asked to vote on this thing. We were asked to put our integrity on the line for the township people.
There's no...
We asked questions, "Where did these come from? How did it happen? You were going to write the letter."
There's no record anywhere of where those properties came from.
That's not an issue for this board, once that process is over.
No, but it wasn't over, it was still open when Jim made that request.
It's all satisfied, all the township committee?
That's just a question to the township committee, you don't use...
Right, that's what the letter was supposed to do.
Will go there and ask the question, people will answer the question?
Talk, talk. Are you...
We're not political.
There are people on camera, so... Would you ask that?
Did you write a letter for the township committee?
Yes, I did.
And did you ask the township committee where these persons came from?
Well, you all have the three questions that were asked. The board doesn't have the authority to start delving into the thought processes, who talked to who, who met with who. It's not appropriate. And I'm not going to, this client or any other client, do something...
You should have said that to us way back when. You should have said, "This is what you want? I can't do that, it's not appropriate." Then it would have put the end to it. And the minutes would have been approved, and we wouldn't be here. But you said you could write that by...
I wrote the first letter, and I wrote the second one, which probably was more than what your authority should be, in order to try to satisfy the desire of the board, I added something to it, but then it became more. Then I started getting an email from Mr. Kelly, he wanted to delve deeper into what was a thought process of the township committee, and...
He's just responding to...
Very simple what I've...
Well, it's just, we're not here to respond to the people wanting to know what's happening to the governing body, they go to the governing body for that. The planning board's purposes are very limited under municipal planning law. You can't just start directing...
Sir, it's a question, it wasn't directing them to do anything other than to respond to what you said. That's all it was.
And it's been done, and they've already said they're not going to respond.
But it wasn't asked the way, it wasn't asked the way it was approved.
According to you, just you.
Okay, all right. This discussion has occurred, at this point, Mike, with due respect to your comment, I'm going to call for a motion for approving the minutes, both the original and the amended, because the amended reflects what was supposed to be done, and we'll do one month at a time. There's a disagreement here, and it's been going on for three months, the letters have been written...
I'll make that motion.
All right, hang on. What I'm basically doing is bringing this piece of it to a close, and, you know, if Mr. Kelly feels that it's not correct, you know, he has an attitude to pursue, as well as everyone else here. So, and with that said, I would like to entertain, Mike, I realize you're in the middle of this, I want to do both the original and the amended minutes. Should I do them separately, or can I do both Marches at the same time?
I think you should do them separately.
Separately, all right. John, at this time, I'll entertain a motion for the regular minutes of the March 21st meeting.
Salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving, seconded.
Do a roll call.
Yeah, better do a roll call. All right, Jane, I'm going to put you to work tonight, you got to go through five of these, let's go.
Kyle Clark.
Yes.
Stephen Ranson.
Yes.
Jim Kelly.
No.
Kevin Constantine.
No.
John Mulaney.
Yes.
Ralph Travellino.
Yes.
Chairman Pash.
Yes, motion carries. I entertain a motion for the second, the amended minutes of March 21st.
Motion to approve the amended minutes of March 21st.
Second. I need a second.
Second.
Moving, seconded, roll call vote, please.
Kyle Clark.
No.
Steve Ranson.
No.
Jim Kelly.
Yes.
Kevin Constantine.
Yes.
John Mulaney.
No.
Ralph Travellino.
No.
Chairman Pash.
Yes. All right, that motion fails, those minutes are not approved. I entertain a motion to approve the regular minutes of the April 18th meeting.
Motion to approve regular minutes of April 18th.
Second.
Second.
Moving, seconded, roll call vote, please.
Kyle Clark.
Yes.
Steve Ranson.
Yes.
Jim Kelly.
No.
Kevin Constantine.
I don't have them in front of me, I...
They should be in the packet.
It's your regular minutes, so they... Here's the amended ones.
So those ones I can't say I knew.
Sorry, take your time, I want to get this ready.
Okay, I'm sorry. Jim Kelly.
This is for the original or the amended?
The original, we're on the original, any vote.
Yeah, no.
Okay, we lost it. Ralph?
Yes.
John Mulaney?
Yes.
And Jim Kelly, you said?
The original, no.
No, okay, yes.
Kelly was a no, I'm at five one.
Chairman.
And myself, yes. Our motion, motion of the original April minutes carry. I'll leave that back when you're done. At this time, I entertain a motion for the minutes of the amended minutes of April 18th.
Motion to approve amended minutes.
I got a motion for the amended minutes, I need a second. I second it. Roll call.
Kyle Clark.
No.
Steve Ranson.
No.
Jim Kelly.
Yes.
Kevin Constantine.
Yes.
John Mulaney.
No.
Ralph Travellino.
No.
Chairman Pash.
No, motion denied, and those minutes are not approved. All right, April, the May 16th minutes. A motion to approve May 16th minutes, please. Yes, we do. May 16th, 5/16.
I'm lost.
All right, take your time. Motion, I need a second. Moving, seconded, roll call vote, please.
Yeah, I'm going to need an amendment.
Yep, take your time.
Hold up there, Jim.
Yeah.
County, please. Kyle, you good?
Good.
Okay, roll call vote on the May 16th minutes, please.
Kyle Clark.
Yes.
Steve Ranson.
Yes.
Jim Kelly.
No.
Kevin Constantine.
No.
John Mulaney.
Yeah.
Ralph Travellino.
Yes.
Chairman Pash.
Yes, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, can we just clarify moving forward, so we can hopefully not have...
Yeah, I'm going to task you with, I would like a short piece of definitions of what the minutes should consist of, so that in case the question comes up in the future, not opinions, but what does the law say with regards to minutes? So if it comes up in the future, we can address it at that point in time, rather than waiting, you know, waiting to hear.
Yeah, I did read that tonight, but...
I know you did, but capsulize it in a piece of paper, so I have it in front of me.
I just don't want the secretary to be subject to being told by any one board member, "This is what I said, put it in." It's not, it's not, it's a transcript.
I need to say something, Jim. I need to say something.
Yeah, absolutely.
Again, all of this could have been avoided, had the letter been written correctly back in March. Look at all the time they're wasting on this, month after month after month. If the letter had been written the right way, Desiree wouldn't have had to have been asked to do certain things or revise certain things. You wouldn't have had to have been asked to do and revise certain things, and look up precedents and laws. I mean, all this board wanted to do was document where those properties came from. If you look at any other township committee board, there's no record of where those properties came from. The Fazio piece was no surprise to anybody, it's been tried, it's been for sale for years, it's been tried to get developed, it made perfect sense for that piece to be in the redevelopment study. It's the other two pieces that have no basis, nobody knows where they came from. And that's what the letter was intended to do, was to get those questions answered. If that had been followed after the March meeting, none of this would have occurred. So I don't think we need a set of rules here, Joe. Everybody understands what can and can't be in the minutes, but this was such important that it needed to be exact. And that's just, that's my opinion, and that's how I feel, because it's the right thing.
Regardless of the issue, either you nor anyone else should be contacting the secretary and directing her to listen to the verbatim quotes.
A bunch of trouble.
In the minutes. Nobody's verbatim, nobody can demand of the secretary...
Nobody was demanding her to do anything.
I think it was a suggestion.
She reached out and asked for help.
I wish she was here, but she's not, so I had a discussion...
Why don't we ask her next one, who she is here?
She is the finest clerk, she has a lot of other jobs. She indicates she spent a whole day listening to these things. Maybe you should ask her, because it shouldn't be happening.
Mike, would it be more appropriate for that type of question to go through the chair, rather than through, to a township employee type of thing? And have a discussion, so that we can minimize the, minimize the burden on the employee?
Well, she can have, she can have 11 people saying...
That's what I meant, with due respect to Jimmy, Jim, I understand what he's saying, everybody understands him, but I don't understand, I've done enough minutes over my lifetime to understand what the minutes mean and all that. I'm looking for the planning board and the council, the definition of what the planning board's minutes should look like, so that I have it in front of me in black and white. I understand, and I think we all understand what the minutes should and shouldn't consist of, and we all, you know, I'm sure there's probably 11 different opinions about how detailed those minutes should be, from half a page to a book, but I need, I want to understand the legal piece of it. And I think the second piece of it, and I'm asking you from a legal standpoint, is it the right way to approach it, is that if there is a question with regards to the minutes, it should go through the chair, and I'll try to work my way to prevent 11 people from bothering the secretary.
Right, true, and to understand the distinction, you want a verbatim, in order of transcript, that's what it's all about.
Well, and that may be the answer.
And as far as the, for some reason, this hangup with this letter and these questions about the Fazio property, it's time to be done with this. The township committee is aware of the questions, either they're answering, or they're not.
Understood.
And I can write 10 letters, they're answering, or they're not. So if somebody wants to have this piece of paper all the time, to say, "Look, I asked and you didn't answer," yeah, they were asked, and they were asked in a proper way. Where is the document? Where is the documented, the two letters I sent?
No, the letters were not, what was asked, important to you?
I know, Jim, just... Jeff, the issue that I can say is, it isn't about the minutes, it's about how the motion was asked. Can the motion be purveyed? Not necessarily the minutes, but how that motion, the language in the motion, can that be exact?
A motion, yes, it can be.
And what resulted?
What happens is, if it gets so detailed, that when you ask your solicitor to write a letter, that you want to tell what the wording will be, that's not how it's done.
I agree.
I put my signature on the letter, it's my wording, and what my client wants me to do. If you want the wording, put your signature on it, that's fine, you can put your signature on it, give it to the township committee as a resident. Don't tell me what words have to be in the letter.
Follow through that. There's a lot of problems for...
Okay, all right. Mike, give me a synopsis on the minutes, please, and moving forward, please contact me if there's questions with regards to minutes, we'll discuss it, and then we'll capsulize it, and then we will follow through with the secretary at that point in time. I see, I made a mistake here, there was no intent of pushing the public portion after this discussion, I missed it, public portion should have occurred prior to this discussion, but I don't think it really matters one way or the other. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to open the floor to the public for public comment.
Motion to go under public portion.
Second. Moving, second, go in favor.
Aye.
All right. Good evening, we're in public portion at this time, would anyone wish to approach?
Well, I'm kind of glad you didn't wait.
Okay, it wasn't...
I know it wasn't intentional.
It's right there, I read right over it, all right.
And I'm going to do my best to cover this myself, because I am as ticked off as I've ever been at a meeting at the moment. Mr. Constantine, Mr. Kelly, I appreciate your integrity standing up for the residents. The rest of you embarrass me. It's sad when it's come to this. I've been up to every meeting since November but one, asking these same questions and other questions, and the township committee has ignored me, time and time and time again. Their words, the last meeting, where they're not beholden to any other board, but they are, should be beholden to the residents, and they ignore us. Flat out ignore us. So when this was brought up here, it was actually a little bit of a shining light in this township. I thought some integrity had returned. I don't see that now. And it's sad, really, really sad. And don't insult my intelligence, Mr. Ranson, you've insulted theirs repeatedly. That should have been as clear as crystal. You interpret it whatever way you want, and you talk about the minutes, the sunshine The sunshine law states the meetings had to be reasonably comprehensive. Which states, and this is just a generic description of it on almost every time you look it up, complete, including all or nearly all elements or aspects of something. Of words are deliberately left out, that's collusion. You should know what that means. And it's sad. It looks like this township is playing against the residents. I've asked for transparency from the beginning and it doesn't happen. And it's sad, I just don't understand it. I really don't get what is the issue here? Is everybody getting money in their pocket? And I'm not trying to accuse anybody, but it just seems odd. There's so much hidden going on and people covering up for other people, it doesn't make sense. I just don't understand it. I've got more, but I can't because like I said, I'm getting really aggravated. But Thomas Payne had a really nice quote once that everybody should listen to. "A body of men holding themselves accountable to nobody ought to not be trusted by anybody." Start waking up, people, because I'm like the third monkey on the ark and I'm fighting to get on, and this is not going to end.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Nancy Kennedy, 711 St. George Street. I too just wanted to take a moment and thank Mr. Kelly and Mr. Constantine for their obvious efforts to bring certain subjects to light. And specifically what that is, is where the parcels in the wetlands came from. And we can argue all day long about what minutes should be and what the semantics are and what this person said and whether poor Desiree, the township employee, felt intimidated by Mr. Kelly, which I cannot possibly imagine. But at the end of the day, what it comes down to is this. The residents who live here deserve transparency, they deserve integrity. And I was very pleased this evening to see Mr. Kelly and Mr. Constantine take the stand that they did. Notwithstanding, I don't know all the history, I haven't been to a lot of planning board meetings, and Mr. Ranson made an excellent point. Mr. Ranson said, "Why are we not asking these questions of the township committee?" And Mr. Ranson, I, this is no, no, no objection to you whatsoever. I know you haven't been at some township committee meetings lately and you have a life and that's understandable. I have been going to the township committee and I have been asking a lot of questions. And at the last meeting, I did ask whether they had had the decency to get back to the planning board about the questions that were posed. And the response was, no, they hadn't. And Mr. Bruno kind of spoke for everyone and said they didn't plan to. And I don't think that's right. And if I had the opportunity this evening, I would direct my questions and my very sincere frustration, not to the volunteers on this board, many of whom I know personally, many of whom are exceptional people, I would direct it to Mr. Doyle. Because Mr. Doyle was just the person running on a campaign of transparency. And I'd love to talk to him about it, but oh golly shucks, Mr. Doyle's not here. And at roughly half the meetings I've attended for different purposes, Mr. Doyle hasn't been there. So to all of you for the time that you've spent, I do appreciate it. I know that you give up, Mr. Petch I've seen for years. Everyone gives up a lot of time away from their families and their personal lives and it's appreciated. And I'll just make this one final comment. When there's a primary election, you really get to see who people are in a lot of cases. Heroes rise, they're the ones who stand up and say, "Golly shucks, I might lose my planning board appointment, but I'm going to do what I think is right." Other people coerce their relatives to take down signs and stab the people in the back who put them in the position in the first place. And whether you're one of the first or one of the second, I really do thank all of you for the time that you take from your families when you do take the time to put the residents first.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Anyone else? Seeing none here, you know, I just thought, oh, that one. One more.
Bill Patravich, 81 Bankwood Drive, Maligan. I see a big conflict of interest here. And it all goes back to the lawyer. That's where the problem begins and that's where it's going to end, right there. And the only problem now that I see is, nobody can stand up and say, "Borelli, you're fired, get the hell out."
Anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Howie Atkinson, 1112 Frysmill Road, Franklinville. I just came out to the meeting tonight just to see what the planning board was up to. After I was out here a few other meetings with the application that affected me. But after serving 20 years on the zoning board, three years on the township committee, three years on the planning board, multiple subcommittees, master plan committees and such over the years. It just saddens me to see this political, what it seems like political maneuvering and putting this board in position to depose the governing body on what they did or didn't do. I think that the, from the get-go, maybe the public should have been directed to go to the township committee to get their answers, not utilizing the planning board to facilitate the governing body to answer the questions that apparently need answering. It's a funny thing, recently I was going through some documents looking for a letterhead and I came across a, came across a recommendation from a subcommittee that I served on back in 2013. And it was when we finished the reexamination of the master plan at that time. I worked with Kevin Reese, our planner from the Alamo Group at that time. And we made recommendations on a solar ordinance. And 2013, here we are 2023, and we still have no solar, no solar ordinance in this township. And close to where I live, we have a 300 acre tract of land that's getting ready to be developed possibly with a solar farm, and we have no solar ordinance. So here we are discussing, in my opinion, a lot of political nonsense that should be go to the township committee to let them deal with whatever did or didn't happen. But this board's job should be making sure that our township is moving forward. We got planning in place, we're looking at getting some grants for recreation so our residents in the township can have a place to walk safely. We should be working on bikeways. The township for many years, from what I understand now, hasn't even applied for the community block grant, which is free money for, we utilized in Newfield Terrace for many, many years. So there's a lot of work to be done in the township. So, you know, we suffered back in 2008, the financial crisis. I came on township committee in 2009. We spent most of those three years getting our finances straightened out. We had layoffs, we went to a four-day work week with most of our employees. We had to lay off police officers, and they were tough times. We started to come out of them and getting back on our feet again, and along comes COVID-19, we're hit again. So it's time to start rebuilding. This township and our whole country really took a beating with this COVID. And it's time to recognize that, it's time to start looking ahead and moving forward. And the only way we're going to move forward is we all have to work together. And whether it's our boards, governing body, our residents, our residents, their voice has to be heard. And they should be taking these complaints to the governing body, letting them know what their expectations are because they're the elected officials. Everyone here is volunteers and appointees. So it's, you know, up to everyone to do the job. Mr. Borelli, Mr. Borelli served the zoning board the whole time I was there for 20 years and is still there. And I always found Mr. Borelli to deal with the most upright integrity and in the best interest of not only the boards but also Franklin Township. So again, let's all try to move ahead. We can try to get the township cleaned up. There's a lot of dilapidated buildings, weeds growing, unpainted buildings, junk cars. We got our hands full, so it's time to start digging in and getting our township back on track. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you for the time that I could be heard.
Anyone else? Harry, you know, you're saying, I intend a motion to close the public portion.
Motion to close public portion.
Second. Move and say go in favor.
Aye.
Okay, Michael, any, no need for a closed session, correct, Michael?
There actually is.
There is?
Yes. You have to discuss it actually with the, actually with the soul of the nation.
Okay, very good. Let's do general comments, let's do general comments and before we go into close. And what, well, with the piece of the closes, will be any action taken afterwards?
There will not be action.
No action afterwards, okay. General comments and closing, anyone?
I attended the Gloucester Solar LLC presentation that was performed last week, 6:13 at the county. And we had talked at the last planning board meeting about possible our solicitor or engineer intending. No one had attended. The application was for a land swap, for a transmission right of way, for an underground cable coming from a possible solar field on Frysmill Road going through the park that's nearby. And so it was done with Green Acres land. And there was no decision-making, it was just a presentation, how members from the public spoke. There were many members of the public who spoke against it and were in favor.
Excellent. Master plan review, I had some conversations with Chris at his office with regards to that. I've talked to the mayor today about the subcommittee. The update would be that CME has been working behind the scenes on the boilerplate piece of the review. The township committee shortly will be appointing that committee, that subcommittee to work with CME to bring the master plan review forward. And that announcement should be made shortly. I guess in, in closing, there's been, there's been some turbulence over these minutes and the letter over the past few months. And what I'd like to say is I am proud of all 11 members of the board. There's been definitely different opinions up here and it's been handled, although heated, some heated discussions have been handled professionally. Mr. Atkinson is correct, we need to move forward. I don't think anybody walked away agreeing with what the contents of the letter and how the letter was written. There are different opinions all over the place, but quite honestly, we need to move forward. I can assure you that no one up here is lying in their pockets. That accusation was uncalled for. It was, every one of these people up here are volunteers that are away from their home life, trying to make this township a little better. And I believe that's the direction we need to go. Was it heated? Were people looking for answers that we don't have and we may never get? But that's not our problem. The question, whether it was in the letter or wasn't in the letter, the question over a three-month period was definitely heard by everybody. If the township wants to answer it, that's fine, if they don't want to answer it, that's them. We need to move forward with the master plan, with the grants, with the applications and do what the planning board is actually intended to do versus getting involved in the township committee side of it. So with that said, I'll entertain, let's say, no, we need a motion to go into close. I'll entertain a motion. And anyone else, too?
I just want to clarify my position. I was totally against that development.
I know, we talked...
Yeah. It wasn't about me being in board of development, I was against it. But we're not in a position, township committee made all that decisions, not, and we should not be.
We were tasked with, we were tasked with a job that we did.
Like what they did.
That's, you know, we were tasked with a job, we did our job, and we need to move forward. All right, Steve, anyone else?
I kind of feel the same way, I agree with, I agree with the original motion, I second the original motion. I'm at the point right now where I think we need to get divorced and I'm just going to move forward.
Okay. All right, entertain a motion to go in close session.
Motion to go into closed portion.
I'll second.
Move and say go in favor.
Aye.
All right. Okay.
I think it's to hear these.
Yeah, we'll stay here. Before we wrap up, is there anyone who has questions?
There needs to be a motion to go into session.
No, we're back, we closed the public, we have a left together.
Does the planning board and the planning board only sit on the master plan committee?
I will answer it the way I was explained and I want to turn the mic to confirm. The, the planning board is tasked with the master plan review. CME has started that process. We had asked for a subcommittee, the discussion was to have a subcommittee, both a planning on and both planning board members and the public, and names have been submitted through the parks office. It is unclear whether that appointment is made by the planning board or the township committee. So I did talk to the mayor today and I said, Jake, you know, we gotta, we gotta pull this together. So he's talking to his solicitor, I'm talking to our solicitor, and we're pulling that committee together. The statute's unclear on who appoints that committee. Quite honestly, we submitted our names to the township committee, the public has. The township committee pulled together and created a subcommittee and advised a subcommittee. There's no, I don't think anybody that, from this board that asked to be on there is not going to be, type of thing. So I think the answer to your question is the statute's unclear on who actually appoints a subcommittee. Because quite honestly, you don't need a subcommittee, the engineer could do the whole thing. But in my mind, going back to the original master plan when it was written, public comment was encouraged back then from all different aspects of the community and I think it's the right thing to do. In full disclosure, some people may, some people may not agree or think that we're, we feel that way. But quite honestly, I feel that we should have input from all concerned parties to pull it together. Nobody's going to get everything they want, but at the same time, everybody gets an opportunity to be heard. So to answer your question, the statute's unclear.
Okay.
All right?
Was everybody on the planning board going to be on?
Can't, we have a, we have a quorum with initial. So the math would be five. 11 persons.
I don't think I was asked.
Right, it was during, it was brought up during a meeting about, what do you think, three months ago, two months ago?
One more. Yeah, listen, if you're interested to submit...
Submit your name to bar. And quite honestly, at this point, I don't even know how many names are in there. But the answer to your question is, is at some point, we can only have a maximum of five on the subcommittee because it's 11-person board.
Four. The 11 is with the alternate, it's a nine-member board.
Nine, yeah, not yet, yeah, you're right, it's really four. And then there's a question about can the township committee, yeah, you would still count them as board members, but they, they wouldn't be able to serve on that subcommittee because then it would be conflicted on when it goes in front of them in the future.
But the planning board does adopt the master plan, so it's really your, it's your baby to work with.
Right, exactly.
It's nice to work with the governing body and come up with a group, but I mean, it's your responsibility.
From a historical point of view, I researched this, and back in September or so of 2004, this township had 18 people on the reexamination of the master plan committee. Who was part of this 18? Yes, there were members of the planning board, yes, there were members of the zoning board, and yes, there were members of the township at large. And there's a list of those eight people I have, it's common knowledge on who was. Several months ago, I believe in the early month of February, I started asking the people from the public who sat on the original 2004 plan if they were interested. One of those people was in this room this night and I asked him if he was interested. It was Howie Atkinson at the time, I believe he was the chair of the zoning board or planning, no, zoning board. And I said, "If you're interested, please put your name in, Rick, our clerk." The other person I asked was Sarah Thurston, who has been historically a member of this planning board committee. And I felt that she was quite productive as a member and would be beneficial as a member of the reexamination committee. So those were the only two people I asked outside of this group. We were asked as a whole, "Please put your name in if interested."
I totally missed that because I was, I was interested.
That, that was the exact way it occurred. As Ralph's point, in 2004, it was my first year on the planning board. And he did these meetings, or, it was only staged at Elsie, and the room was packed. So, and 19 years later, we're still here.
There was, there was over 200 people present.
All right, so anyway, with that said...